Leadership, our superintendent and our leadership team. And all our staff who bonded well in Lord. We bless tonight. Every one of our staff and our students. And our administrative team and everybody that's working together for our students. We pray for an exceptional school year. Please be with the board tonight and the presidents to give information so that our board can make wise decisions and policies. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Amen. Approval of the agenda, I need a motion. Smoke to approve that agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Thank you. Information items, correction, Ms. Lilly?
Mr. Heath, if I may, this is not, and Andrea Lilly in front of us tonight, this is Kimberly Lilly. Because Andrea Lilly actually had a brand new baby this afternoon. So Ms. Kimberly Lilly will be filling in her absence this evening.
Yes, I will update you on a bunch of the K-12 curriculum updates. So if you look at the first slide, that will lead you to our K-12 curriculum site. We released that to teachers last Wednesday. It is ever-changing and being updated as we go. But that is kind of going to be a one-stop shop for educators to be able to access resources. Okay? And just some things that have happened in the past two weeks since we last met with you all. The teachers have gone through K-8, they've gone through iReady training. They had math training in the morning and ELA training in the afternoon. That was last, that was the eighth. And then on the ninth, we also met with beginning teachers. Beginning teachers had a full day of new teacher orientation. And they got to know a bunch of different staff members in the district, different policies. They also got to spend a couple more days in the classroom, meeting their mentors, the admin staff, and then starting to work in their classrooms. Also up here, we spent a day with the K-8 ELA leaders, which the principals identified. And they worked on some curriculum development, looking at pacing guides. Also, they had some discussions around what makes a rigorous curriculum design. And so they went through different 12 steps of designing the pacing guides where they also looked at different components of identifying a pacing standard. Also identifying priority standards that they would put on their commendative formative assessments. Okay? So they really had one day to dig into that. So our K-5 teachers have also identified a day in September as well as October to continue that process. Okay? We also had a day that kind of mirrored that ELA day. And we did that with K-8 math teachers, leaders. And they went through the exact same process and have begun the development of those pacing guides to get them started for the school year. And they again will also have a September date and an October date to also continue the process. So we can have the whole year laid out with the standards that will be used this year. Also, last Wednesday, your K-3 teachers participated in the Reading Horizons foundational reading training that you all approved the week before. So they spent a whole day learning the framework, learning the different cueing system. And they really had a good amount of time where they were able to practice delivering the lesson with colleagues. So I think they really left that day feeling much more confident and ready to turn that around with their students. This past Thursday, trying to think back what day it was. We had a school net person come in with DPI and they spent a day for about four hours, three hours with our K-12 teachers, CTE teachers as well. And she went over really good basics on school net, how to create an assessment, the different tools within, different word banks, question banks that teachers can utilize to create an informative assessment. And the way we're going to utilize those is that at different periods of the school year, we will push out those commendative formative assessments and they will be a little check to see how have the students performed on the standards that have been taught up until that point. Okay? And I, you know, I got some feedback after that session, some teachers found that really helpful, they learned a lot from that session. So we appreciate Rebecca coming in and doing that. We had, we filled the room, this room was jam-packed. Also, on Friday, we, your teachers also participated in a, your K-2, K-3 teachers, and we had some EC teachers and also some administrators come, so that was really awesome. But they participated in a two-hour Reading Horizons session that was a follow-up from the whole-day session. The two-hour was specific by grade band, so they were in really small groups and had another additional session on that. They also participated in a virtual Haggerty session, which is part of the foundational reading component where they're working on sound phonological awareness. They had that session virtual. So our K-3 teachers also participated in that last Friday. And we do have access for that for 30 days, so those that missed it, they can still watch those recordings and be comfortable with that curriculum as well. Tomorrow, we have M-class training. And this is for our K-3 teachers as well as our three, four, our core grade teachers who have those three, four transitional students. Those teachers that have never assessed with M-class. And M-class is a state universal screener that your K-3 teachers use to identify students who are at risk. So those teachers that have never assessed with M-class will be having that training tomorrow to learn how to assess, practice the assessments and learning all the different pieces. We also, our team today went out to schools to talk at the opening meetings with principals with their staff as a refresher to talk about the different components that are in those assessments as well as other key components. So we went to their schools this afternoon. Tomorrow, middle school and high school teachers as well as district staff, administrators, instructional coaches across the district will participate in PLCs. It's a professional learning community. And that is a training that Andrea set up with a few folks from another organization. And they're going to be coming in tomorrow to working with the staff. They're going to start by looking at district data. And then they're going to have the teachers and the district teams looking at their specific school data. And so then they're going to look at that to learn the different components of a PLC so that they can go back to their school and run these meetings where they're looking at data analyzing and making plans and next steps. So they'll be able to turn that around when they go back to their school as well. Coming up also is a CTE teacher meeting. They're going to be laying out the different expectations, also looking at comprehensive needs assessments as well. On Friday, majority of the district will participate in letters, Unit 5 training. And again, this is a continuation of last year, they had 1 through 4, Unit 5 is all in vocabulary. We do have some staff members coming in that are brand new, they'll start Unit 1. Their training will probably be in October. We do have a few staff members who started in your district in January, so they're going to be on Unit 3. So some of them are making up their session in July, or sorry, September. And then we also have a few staff members coming from outside the district. They will be doing Unit 7 coming up here in September as well. So we've got some folks at different points, but most of them are at that Unit 5. Odyssey of the Mind, this is an enrichment, problem-solving-based team program. And one of our instructional coaches, Chrissy Stevens, she is leading this. She has done this in her prior district. And the goal is that she would like to have four teams, two elementary teams, one middle and one high team. And she has set up different booths that parents and families can visit at Open House this week on Thursday so they can learn more about this program. The program will be here at the IC. And she will be accepting applications till the 15th and then making a decision on those who are accepted into that program on the 21st. Okay? And I do believe in her last district, she had some go to Worlds, she was talking about that, she was excited about that. So great opportunity for our students. As I mentioned too already, we didn't have one session with beginning teachers already. We have set up those dates for the rest of the year. Each month, the second Tuesday of each month, we will be meeting them with them in the afternoons as well. Really good group of teachers. I have enjoyed meeting them. Lesson planning. So your teachers will also utilize plan book this year, just as they had in the past. We have laid out, Mr. Gardner and I, we've kind of, and our coaches have developed a little template that kind of gives them a little more specifics of some things to do within ELA, to do within science and math. And also really looking at what are you doing if a student is not mastering? What are you doing if they are mastering the standards and so forth? So we really want them to be very intentional of what they're doing during that small group reteach opportunity time. And that plan is also listed on that K-12 curriculum site. So this weekend, Ms. Lilly had shared this with administrators. Based on before, you guys were on the six-week cycle with grading and so forth. So they have made some changes in the gradebook and Power School that because you're shifting to that nine-week cycle, the T1, which is quarter one, will count for 40% of students' grade. And you'll take in the T2 will be the second quarter, 40% of the grade. And then that exam will count for that 20%. So when your students end their semester, that will be the makeup that will help identify where the student falls within their percentage makeup for their end-of-course grade. And lastly, the ILA, ILA. It stands for Instructional Leadership Academy. This is something that some of your district staff participated in last school year. And we really want to make sure all are participating. And this is for those administrators and they usually identify a school leader also to go with them. These are for low-performing schools. And they will attend these sessions that are put on with some DPI members as some support for these low-performing schools. And these are the four sessions that some district staff will also attend with your administering teams. Okay? Any, I think that was, there we go. Any questions, there was a lot of curriculum updates.
How many low-performing schools do we have?
I believe there. Is it all of two?
Yes.
All of it?
Yes, ma'am.
And the new data comes out when?
It's embargoed until the State Board approves it normally in October.
October, that's what I thought.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, we can still have those green team, no, that's what we refer to them, but going, are they still going to be at these low-performing schools?
I believe so, and we saw them, we saw them today too.
So they all can come back?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
All right, clear bag presentation, Coach Gil, Mr. Floyd, Mr. Mizell.
Good evening, everybody. I got Mr. Mizell, Principal Riverside High School here with me this evening, and Mr. Floyd, Principal Socrates High School. We're going to talk about Martin County Schools Athletic Safety Plan that we currently have in place. Currently, Martin County Schools have us speaking to Chief Deputy and Tim. They feel like our current seats are appropriate. Law enforcement are there to provide support for us at the games. We've got plenty of SROs at all our athletic events. No large bags are allowed such as large purses or backpacks at our events. All attendees will go through metal detectors, will be wanted prior to entering the event. And all bags are subject to search and required to be opened by the owner for inspection prior to entry. So that's what we currently have in place for our athletic events. Sufficiency considerations. You know, it's a lot of districts around us, they have different, everybody has different policies. From Pitt County to Jawan County to Washington County to Guilford County. So here's some future considerations, just wanted to share with you guys tonight. So Guilford County Schools, for example, this is, I kind of did a lot of research. This is Guilford County Schools have a, this is the advanced safety and security bag rules what they currently do in Guilford County. As you can see in the slide, they have permitted bags, clear plastic vinyl bags, larger 12 by 6 by 12. Medical bags at the proper inspection at the entrance. One gallon clear plastic storage bags. Diaper bags with an infant or toddler and at the proper inspection at the entrance. So for example, with diaper bag, you have to have the infant or toddler with you to bring the diaper bag in. And one thing is a little different than some counties, they allow a small clutch bag, no larger than four by five times six by five, approximately the size of a hand without a handle or strap. And at the proper inspection at the entrance. So if it fit me in hand, these are some of the things they currently do in Guilford County. And as you see at the bottom, those are some of the prohibited bags that they do not allow. Purses, larger clutch, fanny packs, cross-body bags, briefcases, leather-sneat tights, backpacks, computer-camembag bags, and then six bags or drawshank bags. And then, as this is not comprehensive, other bags are denied entry on a case-by-case basis. So these are some of the things, some of the information I wanted to share with you guys, what we're currently doing. And some potential things we want to look at, maybe look at down the road. And I got, shoot, I can't remember. Anybody have any questions for me about our athletic policies?
Okay, so now we all permitted to take a, I didn't bring my purse in, but my purse is like a backpack. But it's smaller than the backpack, it's probably like this right here.
Mm-hmm.
It's probably just.
About this size?
Yeah, something like that.
Uh-huh.
So we're allowed to bring anything?
Yeah, so currently it's, it's that, me and Mr. Mizell, Mr. Floyd, we kind of been talking about that, you know, no large bag, we think a large bag, I'm thinking about like a huge bookbag, something, you know, a lot of general purse. But when you bring that bag in, it's subject to be, you know, we come through the gate and we want it, you've got another detector on. You know, we say, ma'am, you know, my dead bag is subject to be searched. Well, you know, you open it up and we just kind of search the bag. We try to, you know, we want to be proactive, we want to be reactive, we want to be proactive we can to try to prevent everything. So that's kind of why we had it up there.
I was asking because Friday night when I went to the North Bay game, they searched the big part, because I had two small ones on the outside. I had eight of them, they would never know because it didn't go through the metal detector. So they didn't know paper, but they did check. So the reason why I'm asking is if we have, if females and a whole lot of kids, they do have small backpacks with their purse these days so they can take it places. So are we checking every compartment or we just taking a major one?
So let me clarify something. So when you went to North Bay Friday night, once you went through the metal detector, you put your purse on the side, your purse didn't go through the metal detector, correct?
No, it did not.
So when you put your purse on the table, they just open it back?
She told me to unzip it and I unzipped the larger, the large compartment. And I had two, two small ones on the outside. But the small was, one of the small on the outside was just being the freshman, but they never checked it. And I thought to myself, wow, okay, I couldn't have been slipping anything through here. So I'm just curious to make sure if we're going to be checking everything?
Yeah, we, we kind of talked about that, get some drumsticks and kind of going through. The biggest thing, I'm going to be honest with you, is being transparent, which is, you know, we, it's going to be us, the staff, going to have to do it. The people who work in gate duties. So that's going to be the thing that we got to make sure, we got to get people on board to make sure they want to do it. You know, if Mr. Mizell and Mr. Floyd have a teacher, you know, they might want to say, I don't want, you know, might be a little resistance to doing that. So we trying to work on that type of things. And Mr. Mizell, he coming from a district who did, so Mr. Mizell, you want to share something about that? He coming from a district, just asked.
Last year I was in a different district and we implemented a clear bag policy halfway through completely. What we did before is what we're doing now. And having, to answer your question, we were trained, administration was trained on how to feel the bag. So like the small compartments, I would have probably felt the bag, but we try not to go inside the bag unless there's a legitimate threat. We ended up going to clear bag with some of the stuff in the community at the time, we felt that was best. It cut down on bags coming in, having to check bags, more receptive of people working in the gates because it's hard to get a teacher to work a gate already. When you ask them to search a bag, some people aren't comfortable doing that. You know, talking about the drumsticks, we did, we did all that too as well to just peek in. But we ended up going to a clear bag policy like we have talked about doing and we're not, and we are. But that cut down tremendously on it. And honestly, once, after about two weeks of it, this is for basketball season, it really wasn't a problem, like people stopped complaining, like it was, it was just expected, that's what it was going to be once you're transparent. This year, where we're at right now, we got a football game Friday night, we got volleyball soccer playing today. We're a little bit behind, so I think it would be hard for us to force a ton of a clear bag policy that fast. So having said that, being transparent with them later on, because if you look at what happened down in Wallace Rose Hill last year, the boy brought the gun in with the shooting at James Kenyon. Dupont County now has all clear bags because of that reason. Because the boy, the child brought the, the grown man brought the gun in, in a backpack. So it's hard to get a teacher to buy into searching someone's personal property. And the SROs, they're not going to get involved because they ain't breaking any laws. So it's really up to our staff to do it, which isn't part of the police. So not saying we got to clear bags at all, I'm fine, I don't mind certain bags sitting up there. If it goes off the metal detector or passing around, I find either way, that's my job. But I would have felt that bag in that case, that's what we would have done. I'd picked it up and felt it, because I felt something, a foreign object, I would have looked in those zippers as well.
I've noticed that a whole lot of stores now, they do have like clear bags and clear backpacks and stuff like that, they do have them.
Correct.
That's probably why, because most people are going to.
Correct, and if you go to, most of your sporting events, East Carolina, South Carolina, Hancock's, Chapel Hill, you're not getting, you're not going to be able to go in unless you got a medical card with that. I don't even believe they allow diaper bags, if I'm not correct. But they do offer Ziploc bags, so gallon or two and a half gallon Ziploc bag at the door. And you can take, you know, it's inconvenient, I don't know how many times I'll say this. My grandfather has turned into pocket knife, had to go back to the car because he couldn't get to game. So that's just an example, he carried a pocket knife his whole life. So that is, you know, something, as technology, these ghost guns and other things that are coming along, it's getting harder and harder to police it. You can't stop everything, but if you're proactive on the back, on the front end, then you don't have to be as reactive. It only takes one time when something happens. And here we are looking at each other, what could we have done better? So that's my thought on clear bag policy, not saying we got to rush into it, but I definitely don't want to rush into anything and do it halfway. But it is something I think later on, we probably need to bring up for discussion. Any more questions?
All right, yeah, no more questions, thank you guys.
Oh, I just have a comment, I didn't have anything, a question about what Mr. Mizell was saying, but I, I know that in neighboring county, in Washington County, they have clear bags and it's not just for games, it's for school. And if you go to any concerts, any, anything, it's not just the games. Or if you go see Dallas Cowboys, you have to have a clear bag. I was also at the game Friday and even though they were gentle, they searched my bag. It was, but they just said, can you open it up? So I personally feel good about that because last year I was at the Swamp, so Riverside, and there was activity. You know, whether the young man had a gun or not, but there was some things that went on. So I just want to say, unfortunately, it's a sign of the times.
That's right, that's right.
And it makes you feel safe when you know we are checking or go through the clear, so you don't worry during the game.
Mr. Floyd want to comment?
You make a really good point. What we've done is we compiled some pros and cons to if we decide to go to a clear bookbag policy. I know all you're like talking about ECU in South Carolina, you're pro events, you're not getting in there with our clear policies. But there are questions that we need to, that we need to look at as a district and before we decide to do that. We need to be able to answer these questions. So we have, we have a lot of those.
I'm wondering if the question, so I must have looked shady and, you know, she didn't, right?
Well, I know, and that is part of the cons. It's like, you know, you don't want to, you want to avoid that at all possible, you want to be consistent.
And I only in prolonging, like Pitt County Schools is huge, right? So Pitt County Schools is another easy individual school, what policy they have, all essential has the policy. So I was talking to another school in Pitt County and it's funny with the verb, he kind of said something like that. He said, we kind of look at the gate, we kind of look through, kind of say, hmm. It's kind of, to me, that's, you kind of judge somebody, you can't do that, that's not good. So you got to come up with a clear.
That's very good.
Some, some districts have said, we let them know upfront, we have a clear bag policy. It's clear, communicated to the community, the traveling schools. If you come in, if you have a bag, it's not clear, your bag will be searched. So a person comes in to that, to that game or that gym, they get there, they already know you don't have a clear bag, your bag will be searched. So you kind of let them know upfront, it's clear or it's going to be searched. So that's some of the issues.
When we do, if we do decide to go to clear bags, would it be good to do the clear bag, book bags at school as well as the athletics at the same time?
So that's one of our, this call got a great question. So Onslow County has a clear bookbag policy as well as a clear.
I've never seen a clear bookbag, evidently they make them.
They catch it up.
They're five below, five dollars.
So, so some districts have clear bookbag policies. And so if they got a clear bookbag policy, it's a clear athletic policy, people in the community are already used to it. So one example, one of the things we discussed, if we do go to this clear bag policy, what happens if Wesley comes to the football game, say it's a middle school, an Acel's school, sometimes a middle school, the games start at four o'clock. So sometimes the kids, they come to the cafeteria, somebody are watching because they're going to the game, but they have a bookbag. Well, we got to find a place to keep those bookbags because the rule says it's a clear bag. So in school, they don't have a clear bookbag, at athletic events they have a clear bag policy.
We need to be, maybe we could buy everybody for Christmas maybe a clear bookbag.
I think welding just did, if I read some correct, I want to say I read the other day, thinking welding, they just did that.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a right district.
Well, this is bringing new light to the making, okay.
And that's what the goal of this was, to just give the board some information and start thinking about these things. And see what direction we want to go in the future. Now, Ethan Jawan has a clear bag policy for games, but not for school.
Right.
So it's kind of, we just want to be thorough, really invested.
I say when we switch, let's switch all of it, what's that to decide? It's a shame the world has come to this.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Well, we got to move, which has.
Thank you guys.
All right, thank you, Carolyn. All right, next is hiring procedure, Ms. Tillie, Dr. Bowen.
Good evening.
Hello.
This is actually just a portion of the hiring procedures. We went over hiring procedures, kind of the logistics from the beginning when we got their applications to the end. But this is a little bit more in-depth about background checks and pre-employment drug screening. And it goes along with safety, which is one of the things that we've been talking about tonight. I have included with your packet some information, they're actually policies that I'll refer to as we're going through this information. So all of our school staff that we hire, our coaches and our level two and three volunteers go through a background check. And that is part of our policy that's in Martin County Schools policy. And that was policy 7100 recruitment and selection of personnel. And then policy 5015 school volunteers. So the public, I'm sure that you are all aware that the public holds us to a very high standard when it comes to the safety and welfare of our students as well as the, we're part of the State Board of Education. None, they're all clipped together.
Okay, the policy, ma'am. I was thinking about safety.
Well, if you read through the policy though, it talks about what's expected of teachers and their commitment to the profession, their standards of conduct.
Okay, I was thinking safety at the school, what we were doing, okay. Sorry.
That's okay. So the public holds us highly accountable as well as our State Board of Education. And so in the background check, we are reviewing criminal history. And we generally consider the history from the time that they apply, five years back from that date when we're looking at criminal history. At one point, we were considering 10 years and Dr. White and I met and had a discussion and we decided to move that to five years. And we look at anything that is more than a minor traffic violation because we also have a policy that requires that any. because we also have a policy that requires that any employee must report to us within twenty-four hours of something happening that is anything above a minor traffic violation. And each of you know that we've met in closed session and talked about situations where we've had to make changes for staff um, because of a violation that occurred, that necessitated a change in employment. Now, there are certain exceptions to the five-year rule, um, that we would maybe consider a longer period of time. Those things would be like, if people have been convicted of sex offenses, child abuse, um, or other types of hangover crimes, that we wouldn't want them even after a long period of time necessarily in the school setting. And when we review a background check, we review each of them individually, because the situations are all different. So we have volunteers, we have coaches, and then we have our own school staff. And so when we're looking at those, there's a lot of things that we factor into making a decision about whether or not that person, if they have something on their record, is someone that we feel good about allowing to come into our school and be responsible for our students. So I'll give you an example first of our staff. Of course, we have, hold them to a very high standard. Um, they have lots of accessibility, and that's one of the things that we look at. What is the accessibility to children? Is there any, anybody supervising that continuously? So in classroom, a lot of times the teacher is the only person in the classroom. So, of course, we hold them to a very high level of accountability with our students. And when we're looking at background checks, that's something that we consider. They have a lot of time with students that is not supervised all the time by someone else. Um, another example would be if we're looking at coaches. So when you think about coaches and the different sports that we have, or even clubs, that is a much less structured class of time than the class gives. Um, a lot of times they're maybe not in a building, they're outside. Uh, there may not be a staff member with them, because the coach may be someone from outside of our school setting that is coaching for us. Um, and so they're not, they also are not as closely supervised, but they don't have, we don't have the same level of authority over coaches necessarily that we do with our school staff. So we look at them a little bit closer, we're looking at background checks. Um, we also consider, if you're, I wanna give another example with coaches. So one of the things that happens, and it doesn't matter how many times we say, don't do this, almost every single year, we have a coach that puts a kid in their car with them and takes them home. And that, that of course is a big liability when that happens. Um, so, that is a consideration. Um, it happens a lot of times because they get home late, a parent doesn't come to pick them up, the parent for some reason they can't come pick them up, and they're in a situation where they really, really aren't sure exactly what they should do. Um, which they should call our athletic director or coach to deal with, and let him handle that situation. But sometimes people react and, and do what they think is best. Um, we also consider the age of the students that they're gonna be working with, in terms of, are they very young children who aren't able to report things? Are they children that, um, for coaching, a lot of times, we have incidents, we have times when we have people who are very close in age to our high school students, so we take that into consideration. We think about their cognitive and their communication skills. So for our students that are in the exceptional children's classroom, we have something to do around verbal, they can't report things. So that's another consideration that we look at. Um, I already mentioned the level of supervision that's involved. And then, we also consider some of our applications, or our staff members, they have to, they have had a criminal offense, there's a requirement on there that they, that they tell us. And if they don't tell us that, then that is automatically disqualifies them from employment. And then the other thing we look at is longstanding patterns of criminal offenses and or failures to appear in court. So if you fail to appear in court multiple times, if you don't abide by the authority of the court system, we don't really have any reason to think that you're gonna abide by our authority in terms of providing direction and, um, what our expectations are of being. We are very consistent when we look at background checks. Um, that is an important piece of reviewing those. When they are reviewed, if there are things that are very questionable, or that I'm not comfortable with, then I always go to the superintendent, so I always have done that prior to Dr. White. And I've done the same thing with Dr. White, in looking at background checks, when we make those decisions together. Uh, in addition, on background checks, it's documented why, what, what the rationale was, and why, um, that person wasn't selected. Any questions about background checks? So the next thing is pre-employment drug screenings and volunteer drug screenings. So, based on our.
Policy hasn't changed since from the past year to?
No, it hasn't. So, based on our policies that we have, again, going back to policy seventy-one hundred and policy fifty fifteen, in our policies we currently have, that we will do pre-employment screening, drug screens on our employees, and that we will also do screenings on our volunteers. Um, any employee that's gonna drive a commercial vehicle has to adhere to policy code seventy-two forty-one, and that's across the state, in terms of they're, um, having that, having a drug screening. Our drug screening test for, um, you can read all those that are on there, but it's, um, quite an array of, of substances. Some of those substances, which substances that you can have a prescription for. So that happens, and a physician from the company will call, and they will ask questions, and they will gather information from the prescribing physician. Um, if they get a release of information from that employee, or free, if it's somebody we haven't employed yet from them. And if they don't get that information, then we consider that a positive, like a positive drug test, and we would not move toward the hiring. Sometimes, they have a prescription, there's enough evidence from their drug screening that they are not using that medication properly. And at that point, if that occurs, then there's a conversation with the physician. Um, and then I generally contact the person, have a conversation with them, and then we will talk about that with, um, a superintendent. But generally, in those situations, we have not hired those individuals, because it blends itself to having a substance abuse problem.
Excuse me, do we have, do we test pre-employment before we even call them in for our interview?
No ma'am. We test, when we get to a point, when we get to a point that we're offering them a job, I say then, um, it's contingent, the job is contingent on, we're approval, it's contingent on your passing the background check, as well as a drug screening. So we don't do it until that time.
Okay.
Uh, so the next thing I was gonna talk about was what other counties do. Because we are actually one of very few counties in the Northeast that do drug screening. Pitt County is the only one, that's the closest one to us that does drug screening.
But they, but they, or anybody?
Well, they, they do the mandatory one for the, any employee who's gonna drive a commercial vehicle for us, like a bus. But they, or, um, our maintenance people, but they don't do it for just general employees.
That's surprising.
It was a little bit surprising, I'll be honest, when I went and started searching, I was surprised, especially in our area. Um, but Dare County does not, um, Craven County does not, Corret County does not, Eaton and Chalene does not, Bertie doesn't, Bober doesn't. But there are a lot of schools in North Carolina who still maintain a pre-employment policy, and I've listed some of those working. So the cost for, do you want your hand handed to me? So, um, the cost for a pre-employment drug screening is seventy-two dollars per, approximately seventy-two dollars per employee. Um, and looking back, especially before COVID and since then, on average, it's about seventy-five hundred dollars a year. And that, of course, is dependent on how many employees we are bringing in, but it's seventy-two dollars per.
But we do it before, before we hire somebody, though?
Yes.
I mean, we do it anyway.
We do it before they, if they're working with children, they, it has to be cleared before they step into the school building. So.
And we pay for it, right?
We do. So this, this, this became a discussion when we were looking at coaching, and having a difficult time finding coaches. And so one of the questions that came, one of the things that came up, I think, in talking to different people, is they didn't wanna take a drug test, because they knew they were gonna test positive, probably for marijuana. So that's holding back getting some coaches. So the question would be, is that something the board wants to reconsider?
We're talking about for volunteer cases.
Well, if you would do it for volunteer, yes. Well, when we, once we test an employee, when we, when they start, they, we don't test them again.
Right, unless there's.
Unless there's a reason, a suspicion, yes. Or their bus driver was screening.
Yeah.
For our coaches, we do their background check and drug screening.
When they're hired?
One year, like every year they get a background check and a drug screening.
One piece of information for this, and Dr. Bowen helped me with this. The, from what we have been told, CBD, which is legal, tests the same as marijuana.
Yes.
So, when we do a drug screen, if the person has taken CBD, which can be bought over the counter or prescribed by a doctor, they will test positive on the drug screen. So even though it's legal, they didn't pass the drug screen. And so that is something we do need to look at, because in order for them to be employed with us, we would then say, you have to not take this legal prescribed medication in order to work for Mark County Schools, in order to pass your drug screen.
If it's legal, if the physician, if they test positive for it, and the physician contacts them and is able to substantiate that it is a legal prescription.
But what about CBD? That was my question.
The CBD, if that's, that's just used by that multiple places. So no, we, if you don't have a prescription for it, then, and it tests the same.
I think we need to tell the difference in marijuana and CBD.
It does, it does, CBD, it does say, the amount of CBD you have to address to hit a positive drug screen, if, CBD oil is a non-regulated commodity at this time. The FDA has chosen not to inject itself into that, however, they have been trying to for a while. Um, so, I, I would say that I've, I've dealt with this CBD oil issue, uh, just recently. The point that is often made is, if you're injecting that much CBD oil, um, it's a law.
Yeah, okay. All right, I tell a problem with that.
You done that. So this was informational, this was informational for me, um, for consideration as I move forward. It does not happen very often, but we have had people tested about positive for cocaine on their drug test, um, and some other.
You don't let before hire?
Yes, we did not, we did not employ them, as well as opioids that were non-prescription.
Well, have we got enough coaches? I'm gonna wait, we got enough, I want to do a coach.
Miss Carter, I answer your question. To answer your question, openly, um, currently at Riverside, we, we, we short of coaches. We need some more coaches, and a lot of our sports, a lot of our coaches are non-faculty coaches, so that means they don't work for the school system, so, and that's what Ms. Moore is, not the one is talking about. When they come do their background check, a lot of them, if they, I mean, they might have a clean record, but if they went out to party the weekend and did something they shouldn't have done, when they, it's gonna come back failed. So they're, they're not gonna be allowed to coach with us in Mark County Schools. So, that's kinda how that comes up.
I think it's important to go back to the policies that we require people to adhere to in terms of role model and ethics. Um, because I think that speaks a lot to what you're thinking about. Any questions?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Um, on our background checks, we hold people responsible, even though they've not been convicted?
We do, and we say, we would be glad to reconsider at such time that you completely.
But based on your policy of five years, if they're not convicted, they go to court next week and they're not convicted, they're still not available for five years?
No, sorry.
Based on what you said.
No, when we do another, we will do another background check. But we say we're looking back for five years. So if we do another background check and they've been found not guilty, then they would be considered for employment.
And that would be for misdemeanors as well as anything?
I'm not gonna say it's a same answer for every situation, because sometimes it's not. Sometimes there are plead deals that are made, and it doesn't mean that a person's not guilty of something. So it depends on, it's, that is dependent on the situation.
So a person can't come back and retake the drug test in thirty days and pay for it himself, and then go and put that together first, then they may have did some gummies or something, I don't know. And, um, so they fail. So, it is an option for them to come back, like, say, hey.
Does they, does they apply for another?
Thirty days, they pay for it yourself.
Yes.
Well, don't the people know in advance when they're gonna take the drug test, that it won't happen?
Well, I can't tell you when coaches are taught to, but whenever, the, the time I called, from the time I called, when I, when we're talking about hiring, um, or if we're hiring and paying for a coach, then that is the first thing I say. And I do think our athletic directors are well aware of the policy. I think that's why a lot of people don't, they don't even come, or apply, or, because they know that they're not gonna pass the drug test. I, I will say honestly, not passing the drug test is very infrequent. Occasionally, yes, but very infrequent. I'd say four, I'd say four, maybe five, um, marijuans in the past six years. So most of the time, it's, everybody passes.
Any questions?
So do you asking us to change anything or?
No ma'am, I'm presenting, informational. Information.
Good.
Thank you.
This is just to make sure the board is aware of how we're screening employees, what we're looking at, and just being transparent and honest about the things that are being brought to us, um, so that you guys are aware to. Nothing to.
And we need to finish.
Just wanna make sure that you're aware. All right, so this next item I just wanted to bring up for discussion. Uh, one thing I have been putting in my weekly newsletters and would like for, uh, the board to consider, this is not an action item tonight, this is just for discussion, is the possibility of only having the work sessions as needed. So, looking at having one board meeting per month, but if we need a second meeting, we can have that and have the work session. Um, and looking at what we wanna get done this year, I want my team, and I, I myself am gonna be very visible in the schools. I want them to be in the schools. Um, and looking at, at the size of our district, I do feel that we could get all of our material done in one meeting a month versus, um, having to come back twice a month. Um, but of course, I wanna act at the pleasure of the board, and we can certainly, um, do whatever you guys feel is best, but I did want to just bring it up for discussion. And again, it's not eliminating, but only having the work session if we need it. If it is a needed work session, we would have it, but if it's not, then we would just have our, our normal one, one board meeting a month, which is what most around us do, is have that one board meeting a month.
Well, I thought it's what we did have.
We have, right now, we have one board meeting and a work session, so we have two meetings a month. Um, but what I'd like the board to consider is going back to just one meeting a month versus the two, and then we'd only have the second, only have a work session as needed.
Can we just talk about being transparentness? Do you see how good it was for us to hear this tonight? I mean, how are we supposed to make policy? I mean, how are we supposed to make policy and vote if we don't go over the information? And in the past, we've been going through the first, second, and third readings of policies, and we're not doing that anymore.
Oh, yes ma'am, we'll still be doing that as the year goes on, but that.
But have we been doing it since you've been here?
We have, we've updated several policies, but those were amendments, and you don't have to do three readings when you're just adjusting a current policy. So if we implement new policies, we would have to go through the first, second, and third readings. But what we have done, we haven't had to do three readings.
So only the ones we've been looking at are the ones we changed or new policies? I don't think so. We've been going through all the policies, I thought, with the first, second, third readings. So that's what was taking that, a lot of time in the meetings.
Well, we can certainly, even when we have policies to consider, we can do however meeting, how many readings pleases the board, but we don't have to, we can do that in our meeting. Like everything we've done tonight could have been in our September 1st meeting. We really didn't need two meetings this month. But we added these items to the agenda tonight for information only, but you see, there's actually no action items on the agenda tonight other than the personnel report.
Well, is it gonna make the meetings too long?
I don't.
That's why we started doing it.
I think.
And we don't want to have five of our meetings.
Yes, ma'am, understood. No, ma'am, I don't think it would make the meetings too long, I really don't. I think with careful planning and strategic planning, we could keep the board adequately, appropriately informed, which I think we've been doing and will continue to do. And look, we could always go back, if you feel like we need more meetings, we can.
Well, I can hot take, I'm requesting a work session, cause I want to see that test data.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, stuff like that, when we budget.
Yes, and so when we need.
That's when we need.
Yes, absolutely, when we need it, we need to have it.
And whenever, like before the new year, before the new semester, when we're looking at new courses and things like that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to see how we're, we're doing on them new materials.
Yes, ma'am.
So I would say a lot of months, sure, we could do it all in one night, but have effective ability first, but I, I have the information we need to know.
Yes, um, I think with careful planning, I'm committed to make sure, to making sure the board has every piece of information you need, committed, so.
And I don't like that telephone call saying, we got the vote on something we hadn't discussed.
Right, and we will.
I don't like that at all.
We will make sure that we are keeping the board properly informed, and if we need to have a second meeting, we'll have it. I just, again, this is not an action item tonight, it was just up for discussion, I wanted to see where, you know, where everyone was. But I do truly believe we could have one meeting per month, do it efficiently, effectively, and still have high-quality communication. But that would also allow the central office team to be focused on our schools, to be in the schools, and to do exactly what we said we were gonna do today. Inspire what we expect, put our children first, and give our best every single day. And to do that, moving to one meeting a month would really support, support the team. But I'm also committed to ensuring that the board.
Four hours, one night, and then two, two hours, you know, it's the same amount of time. And you know, when you hear a whole lot, you can't get so much in your mind at one time, so just think about that, especially test scores when, when they come in.
Right.
I would say, I'll, I'll agree with you, we only need one meeting per month. There's something, there's something coming.
Right.
Because we went for years, we just wanted more, and all it wants, I don't know, adds, gets switched.
When we started standing nine thirty, ten o'clock?
Well, I, we, it's something.
Well, I'm right here.
But you know, as people play with game, that's what it takes.
Well, we'll play it in our hands.
Now, as, as for the policies, for some time, we've been handling the second and third readings and the consent agenda. So that's just dealt with upfront, takes no time. The five o'clock meeting that we had last month was for hearing, and the entire.
I only require to be here for hearing.
And I know we still, we have people on the board that still have jobs they have to go to every day. But as long as we can get four board members here, we, we can have a hearing. And it's good to go ahead and get them knocked out early, or I think it is.
Any other questions or discussions, anything to answer about that?
I just wanna say that I, you know, am a proponent for efficiency, so if it's needed, then I would just entrust you to say, okay, well, we need a work session. You know, I understand both sides, but whatever we can do to become more efficient. And far as the board, as far as the policy reading, I think this person's gonna make sure that we're following the law as far as that, so.
Yes, and we have checked with him every time. Yes, ma'am, we've checked with him every time we reviewed a policy. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I move the Martin County Board of Education into closed session subject to advice from the attorney pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1 and A6 to prevent disclosure of confidential personnel information under General Statute 115C-319 and to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee. The board will also go into closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3 to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve attorney-client privilege to consider confidential student matters as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143.318.11A1 and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act 20USC 1232G and the North Carolina General Statute 115C-402. The board will also go into closed session to establish or instruct staff or agents concerning the terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property as provided in North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
All right, we have a motion to go into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay? Close session granted. And then I need a motion to approve personnel as presented in closed session.
Will you approve personnel? Stand.
Have a motion and a second to approve personnel as presented in closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay?
Thank you.
One announcement, the September board meeting will be held on September 11th due to the Labor Day holiday. Does anybody have anything else that they'd like to bring up tonight?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna say, I joined this board in 2015, and today's conversation was phenomenal.
It was, I mean, it was great.
It's probably the best that I have attended, and so I wanna thank Donna White and her team, but also give a special shout out to Ms. Alicia Caldwell and the drone line.
Come on back, sir.
Yes, it was. And I will say this, you know, we, we hear reports and we see, see reports about how many employees we have and visit schools, but until you stand in front of a room and look out and see the absolute sea of people that was there today, you don't let it realize how many it takes to run a school system. It was just, everything today was amazing.
And was so organized.
Yes, it was.
It's entertaining and fun.
Three and a half hours, non-stop. You go to a professional show, it doesn't last three and a half hours, and they take an intermission. Three and a half hours, wow.
And everybody out there, all we got, we're just. We're impressed.
Yes, indeed. All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, sir.
Move then second into adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close nay?